Yeah, and then recently, so that way everybody knows.
I'm good on that athletic.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about, is that all right?
I think so. I mean, can anybody else read that update about the athletic insurance? I know that.
There's one on the very front, this.
I'd like to call the business meeting, the Elwood City School Board for Thursday, July ninth, two thousand fifteen. Roll call, please, Mr. Zirone.
Mr. Bazzelli, Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Garda.
Here.
Mrs. Grossman.
Here.
Mr. Morella.
Here.
Mr. Newpower. Mrs. Panzera.
Here.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Mancini.
Eric.
Mr. DeCaro.
Eric.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? First, we'll have a moment of silence. Like to ask everybody to remember Mr. Mancini's wife had died during an accident.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Party's stance. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Do not have superintendent's report or education report tonight. The other visitors, Mrs. McMurial.
Hi, I'm just a visitor.
All right, thank you. On revenue and finance, Mrs. Grossman, could you read that, please?
Sure. Number five, general fund treasurer's report. In your folder is the general fund treasurer's report for the period June first through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. The summary of accounts is as follows. West Banko checking, fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-two, forty-five cents. PLGIT, ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars, ninety-eight cents. PSDLF, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, twenty-one cents. PA Invest, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, seventy-nine cents. ESB Bank Public Invest Account, four million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, fifty-one cents. ESB Certificates of Deposit, three million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars, three cents. Total cash and investments as of June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, seven million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, ninety-seven cents. I move that the treasurer's report for the month of June be approved as presented.
We have a second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, are there any questions on the motion? Mrs. Panzera.
Mr. Zirone, don't we need to change that to West Banko Public and Certificates?
Ah, yeah.
I was gonna say, I didn't know if that switched over yet, okay?
It has switched over.
Everybody, everything's switched.
Okay.
I pulled up last year's reports and I kinda got bony, so we'll get it fixed.
Thank you, Mrs. Panzera. Any other questions? Are there any objections? The motion passes.
Number six, general fund accounts payable. In your folder are the general fund accounts payable checks. The first batch includes check one zero nine six six zero through one zero nine seven four two and eight wire transfers amounting to one million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, sixty-nine cents. The second batch includes checks, one zero nine six five nine, one zero nine seven one six, one zero nine seven one seven, and checks, one zero nine seven four three through one zero nine eight four three, four two, sorry. One hundred and three checks and two wire transfers amounting to eight hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars, seventy-six cents. I move that the general fund accounts payable checks be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Stevenson. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number seven, capital reserves fund treasurer's report. In your folder is the capital reserves fund treasurer's report for June. The total investment at June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen was five hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, eighteen cents. With eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars, thirty-two cents in the checking account for a total funds available of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars, fifty cents. I move that the capital reserve fund treasurer's report for June fifteen, two thousand fifteen be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number eight, capital reserves fund accounts payable. In your folder is the capital reserves account payable report. Included is check one four four three amounting to two hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. I move that the capital reserve fund accounts payable check be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Stevenson.
Question.
Question, Mr. Stevenson.
As soon as I checked through it. I mean, who was I checked through? It's guys we can't.
Eric and G.
Eric and G.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number nine, IDEA B Subgrant One, IDEA Section six nineteen contracts. In your folder is a copy of the subgrant contract for implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA. Sections six one one and six nineteen between the Midwestern Intermediate Union Unit Four and the District. The agreements outline the responsibilities of each entity in managing and spending section six one one funds totaling two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And section six one nine funds totaling five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two. I move the agreements be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda. Any questions?
I have a question.
Mrs. Petrelli.
I, I mean, I, I heard what she said, this is the Individual Disability Act, Education Act. So this is just a grant that we get?
These are federal funds that we get every year for special education. The money goes to the intermediate unit four. We expend the funds and then I build the IU four back on a monthly basis to get our funds on a pass-through type grant. But we do get them every year.
So this grant, the, the teachers are actually here?
Yeah, the teachers.
But it goes through the MI.
Yeah, it's our staff. We're just paying our staff with federal dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number ten, quarterly earned income report. In your folder is a copy of the quarterly earned income report as of June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Indicating total collections of one million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, sixty-two cents. For the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. I move the report be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Stevenson. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Eleven, athletic insurance. In your folder is a summary of the proposals submitted for student slash athletic insurance. I move the coverage be placed with U.S. Fire Insurance Company as administered through the Williams slash, William's-Cleveland Company for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year at a rate of twenty-eight dollars for voluntary K through twelve school time insurance. A hundred and twenty-four dollars for voluntary twenty-four hour insurance and eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for athletic coverage.
Second, Mrs. Panzera. Question, Mrs. Stevenson?
Question on this, this is a change from our current one, is this correct?
It's change from current care.
What was the difference?
The difference is basically the premium. At one point in time, Boecker offered a lifetime maximum. They reduced that to ten years and that's for a premium of ten thousand, one forty-nine. I got the second price from U.S. Fire and after a little bit of confusion on the deductible, their price is basically eight thousand, three hundred and seventy. So the coverages are pretty much exactly the same with a little bit of a positive for U.S. Fire. So it would be a change. The other change is that I was dealing with a company from New Jersey. And now the claim, or the claims would be administered through the Williams-Cleveland, which is in Wilmington rather than Newcastle. So I have a local agent that's a little bit easier sometimes to, to get serviced.
All right. Reason I asked is I thought on Monday night we agreed to go the other route.
We have, and then I was a little bit confused on how the deductible works, so I called and clarified it. And because there's a base policy of twenty-five thousand dollars, that serves as the deductible. So we're basically buying two policies. One for twenty-five thousand and then a catastrophic policy that follows after that, but it will be seamless and if, God forbid, we ever had to use the policy, nobody would know that they were two different underlying policies.
Okay, thanks.
So is our total charge for this, what, eighty-five, twenty-two total? That includes the twenty-eight plus the one twenty-four?
No, what those twenty-eight and one twenty-four, we'll offer each family in the district the opportunity to purchase insurance if they don't have it.
Okay.
So that's the student part of the insurance. The athletic part is the eighty-three, seventy for all the interscholastic athletics, cheerleaders, conditioning, so on and so forth. I think the band is included as well, but.
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Grossman. We'll go to Personnel and Education, Mr. Garda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number twelve, fall coaches. In your folder is a list of coaches for the two thousand fifteen fall sports season. I move the list be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Morella, are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Not to mention names, but if, if, depending on who we hire, does that have any issues with the coaching? Can they be doing both?
No.
Because one of the lists on here, the coach.
Could you have the games?
Right, but if there's a problem, can you do both jobs?
I don't think so.
I think that would be for the board to decide.
Because that's a lot of time.
Yeah, that doesn't have to do with this, but that'd be under Personnel.
Okay, but that's why I'm not mentioning names, but that's one of them on there, so if you're.
Before we make that decision.
You probably wouldn't want to, he'd want to get approved in case he wasn't, do you know what I mean?
Okay, but I, I, it's the only reason I'm asking that before we.
Yeah, I think before we make that decision, we can discuss.
Okay, just.
Are there any other questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number thirteen, special ed teacher. I move that Lita Kuchbach be hired as special education teacher in accordance with the current professional contract pending Act one sixty-eight approval.
Second, Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah, what's Act one sixty-eight?
Act one sixty-eight's a new pass the trash law. We have, the employee has ninety days to basically get a form, fill it out, send it to any previous employer. And they have to mark down that they haven't been, you know, under any investigation for any child abuse, any sexual misconduct with a student. So that new employee will get that form, fill it out, send it to any previous employer, any previous job that they've had where they've worked with kids. And they have to get those sent to us within ninety days. So it's all, now everything is all pending, no matter what, because this Act one sixty-eight is passed.
Do we have to hire them before they send that form out?
You have, you have the right to, and then we can give the ninety day period to.
I mean, I'm just thinking they have to have Act thirty-four and the other act before they apply.
This is like, this is so, like, for previous, like, you know, like, what, what happened in the past is employee, employers might have done something and the employer may have said, "Well, why don't you just resign instead of us investigating this?" So that stuff doesn't get reported. So that's called the pass the trash, but they, the law is kinda like eliminating the ability for schools to say, "Hey, why don't you just resign and we won't do anything about it." So now you send it to the employer. This, this is different than the state, you know, anything registered with the state with the other kind of clarances. We've been filling them out, like, we get them sent.
What did they ask?
There's three questions. If they're, if they've ever been under investigation, or is there an investigation pending on them for any of these, you know, child abuse, sexual misconduct with a student and so on.
So the reason I'm asking why this isn't ahead of that. We can all remember a few years ago when we hired a guy at Dartmouth. We hired this guy as a high school social studies teacher and then found out the next day he was like Jack the Ripper.
Oh, my.
And his, and his prior school district. And I was terminated, was moved and terminated.
That wasn't for that, this reason, though. Like, this, this is only for the sexual misconduct. This is, yeah, child abuse, sexual misconduct and so on. I think that person. Just for teaching, yeah, teaching wasn't for, like, this kind of, this is the Jerry Sandusky continuation. Well, we would have to send that out, like, we, like, if, if we did it ahead of time, every candidate would have to do it. We'd have to, we'd be getting these from, so school district should make that decision whether they're just doing with the candidate you're hiring or with everybody you're interviewing. So that, it really doesn't give time, because if you work at a, like, there's no requirement for, schools have to do it, but let's say you work at a private, they don't have to send it in. There's no.
What I'm getting at, though, is, you know, we hired this person, they started working. Eighty-five days later, we find out.
It's, it's, if it comes back unclear, if it comes back, maybe those check marks, we can dismiss them without any.
We have the choice, too.
I mean.
It's not like you have to, you could investigate a little bit farther, see what it is.
Yeah, they, they acknowledge it, there's no investigation where there has been investigations on, on that form. So if you get it back and it comes back that they've been, you can say, "Your Act one sixty-eight isn't clear, we're dismissing it." So.
Okay, just keep me.
I only get a number two on the list.
I guess, um, I thought we had written the motions a little differently, but I just want to make sure that this is all step one. And Mr. DeCaro, does that need to be clarified?
I mean, should we just say? Yeah, because in the course of the current professional contract, it doesn't tell us where they're starting on the contracts. And I think typically we say, you know, Act step, step one, yeah.
Yes, and I would ask, maybe just amend the motion, this one and then from the motions going forward. Again, we're working on Google documents, maybe we got our Google documents confused, but I thought step one was in there. Turns out that it's not, so just so there's not an issue down the road.
Do we need to re-vote that to amend it?
It's not been voted.
It's not been voted on, right?
Sir.
You can amend it right now, Mr. Garda. Go.
You're being hired as a special education.
Go through here, sir.
Yes, please.
Number thirteen, special ed teacher. I move that we have Kuchbach be hired as a special education teacher in accordance with the professional contract. Step one, pending Act one sixty-eight approval.
Second, Mrs. Grossman. Are there any questions on that motion? Another roll call vote, please. Mr. Zirone, roll call vote, please.
Sir. Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mr. New, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number fourteen, special education teacher. I move that Samantha Self be hired as a special education teacher in accordance with the current professional contract. Step one, pending Act one sixty-eight approval.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Grossman. Any questions on the motion? Another roll call vote on that, too, please. Roll call, please, Mr. Zirone.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes. Motion passes.
Number fifteen, elementary guidance counselor, community liaison. I move that Chelsea Federick be hired as an elementary guidance counselor, community liaison in accordance with the current professional contract. Step one, pending Act one sixty-eight approval.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Grossman. Any questions on the motion?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call, please, Mr. Zirone.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Did we call this next one yet? Does any, did we call anybody yet?
No.
I was gonna say, if, after we've hired all four, why don't you go call them all and get approvals?
That's what they're gonna do. They have the numbers right here.
Because if they don't like them with the job, we have fallback people here.
We have a vote on it before we call.
Number sixteen, elementary physical education teacher. I move that Ashley Coulter be hired as elementary physical education teacher in accordance with the current professional contract. Step one, pending Act one sixty-eight approval.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please, Mr. Zirone.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Motion passes.
Number eighteen.
Number eighteen, yes.
Superintendent bonus. Per Section four point two A of the Superintendent Employee Employment Agreement, I move Mr. Mancini be paid a one percent bonus based on his two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen performance evaluation.
Second, Mrs. Petrelli. Are there any questions on the motion? A roll call, please, Mr. Zirone.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Number nineteen, memorandum of understanding, SEIU. In your folder is a memorandum of understanding between the district and service employees, international union, local thirty-two BJ, relating to use of substitute custodians when a regularly scheduled employee calls off work. I move the memorandum be approved as presented.
Second.
I'm sorry, did we break the purpose of discussion?
Your question.
Mr. DeCaro, had we taken that to arbitration, would we have lost it?
I think we have a good argument because of the contract assignment as to that issue. It didn't speak to how we call off or any process in terms of a substitute.
That was my understanding, too, so why are we agreeing to this?
Because it's, you incur a lot more cost than eighty-four dollars to get through the whole process.
Yeah, but then again, that sets up precedent.
And they, they agreed to the process. We wanted, Mr. Mancini and I, with Mr. Schuster's input. This was basically Mr. Schuster's preferred process. So they agreed to the process. It came down to, basically, they, they were taking it to arbitration over the eighty-four dollars. So when we talked about it, we thought, in my opinion, was, we got what we want in terms of the process, but we spend.
So we got this magistrate.
Twenty times the amount of the.
Yes, okay, eighty-four bucks is not.
Yeah, but we got what we, our.
I don't want to get into a point where everything turned around and put out eighty-four bucks because they'll follow greatly.
Correct. We talked about that in, in, but, you know, because we got what we wanted in terms of confirming the process.
Memorandum of Understanding gives us the ability to take care of the overtime.
All right.
Any other questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garda. Properties and Transportation, we have nothing here tonight. We'll move on to Student Affairs, Athletics, Mr. Morella.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Number twenty, under Student Affairs, policies revised. Revised policies, number eight nineteen, suicide awareness, prevention and response. Attachment number eight nineteen, policy number nine sixteen, school volunteer. I'm gonna read it again, speak a little bit. Policies revised, revised policies, number eight nineteen, suicide awareness, prevention and response. Attachment number eight nineteen, and policy number nine sixteen, school volunteer were submitted for board review at the union meeting. Sorry that doesn't read. I move the policy be approved as presented and incorporated to the minutes of this evening's meeting.
Second, Mr. Stevenson, questions?
Yes, thank you, good for teaching staff and our administrative staff for their input and putting this policy together. It's very comprehensive, I think they did a great job with all of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number twenty-one, CREY Challenges Consortium Agreement. In your folder is an agreement between the Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four Alternative Education Consortium and CREY Youth and Family Services. I move that the agreement be approved as presented and that the district utilize five slots at per slot cost of eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections?
I have a question on that. Yes, Mr. Morella.
How many slots did we purchase last year?
Five.
We used all five.
Five, yeah, you know.
Sometimes we dip in with somebody else every now and then.
We really tried a bunch of them, Mr. Morella.
Yes.
It's difficult, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number twenty-two, Service Agreement, Orange County Drug and Alcohol Commission Incorporated, SCA. In your folder is an agreement that calls for the district and SCA to cooperate in the provision of drug and alcohol prevention such as referral services at a cost of two thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
And that is all I have tonight under student fare, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Recognition Communications, do we have anything?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, guy, Mr. Stevenson.
No, I am.
Okay. Mrs. Panzera, could you read the motion under new business for the PSBA delegate?
PSBA delegate. I move that Renee Petrelli be appointed as the voting delegate for the PSBA delegate assembly meeting on October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second, Mr. Morella. Any questions?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please, Mr. Zirone.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yeah, I don't think I'm allowed to vote for myself, am I?
Sure can.
Sure, I'll do it for myself.
Mr. Stevenson.
No.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
He's on the record.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
I'd like to change my vote.
Why, Mr. Stevenson, the motion has passed. We will not be adjourned, we will be going to executive sessions. And we have interviews and we will reconvene sometime tonight.
I have a question. Is my concern public or should it be?
Actually, I'm not sure what your concern is.
I just wanted to go over the Nuppin' policy. I wasn't.
That's a public. Unless you're gonna talk a lot of specific employee, potential employee, like.
Yeah.
Then that would be personnel.
Okay.
Well, under new business, Mr. President, we discussed, um, probably previously about the Hartman change that we were supposed to discuss at tonight's meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, that is not on the agenda, we can't discuss that under new business.
I would like to bring up the change in the Hartman schedule. It's come to our attention that some of the board members were not clear on what we were voting on and that we would like to have another chance at voting on that change.
Was that one conducted with a phone call on the phone?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Do we know if somebody have, you have to be on the winning side of the motion, initial, original motion should revisit. You can't be on the losing side of it.
You were on the losing side.
I was on the losing. But I was on the winning side and I wanted to revisit it, please.
Okay.
That's just under Rogers rules because any entity would never move forward if the losing side could always revisit a vote, so they make it so the winning side can always revisit.
Okay, so Mrs. Panzera actually wants to bring up that for discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I disagree with the, the roll call votes, especially the calls. Because of, my biggest thing is the lack of preparation either on the administrative or the teaching staff to get something approved during our regular meetings needs to stop because we didn't have a chance to discuss it. I don't know who voted for what, and overall, I disagree with the program. I agree with everything she said. I agree with all three things that she said.
But, oh, but did we vote, was it an actual vote?
Yeah, Nancy called and said we needed that.
Or was it, what do you prefer? Was it an actual? Was it an actual vote?
Yes.
This is about to change the process.
I thought I just emailed, I wasn't for it.
No, there was an actual vote, Nancy called.
And I, I'd asked previously about just the, the polling of the board, that it needs to, we need to find a better way. Because the way that it is set up now, I don't feel is, I don't, I just don't feel that it works. I don't feel that we have a chance.
If I could, just, you correct me if I'm wrong, your concerns. Sometimes we use polling calls on, they may be a non-educational thing or something that needs to be done. This was, was a little more, this is a major change. Is that what you're saying, you're not necessarily opposed to fact polling?
I would like to see.
No, I'm opposed to.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear of that.
I would like it unless it's an absolutely emergency, because when you're at work, you, you can't think or you might not be able to, and you should be, every one of us should be a part of that vote. It shouldn't be, well, I can only get a hold of five, but I got five yeses. Well, who knows who, who voted what way? I would like it so that we all, we all can see what everybody voted and we are all contacted. That's my personal opinion.
Was it a, an official action of the board that was taken? Cause it asked you to take it in a public meeting, you'd have to ratify it at subsequent public meeting. Or was it a?
It was informed.
And then, to making the distinction between was the administration saying, it's not coming to you for a vote ever, but we want to get your input is, is.
That's what I took as, but it's not what it was.
Or was it getting your official action?
I think that would be a question for Mr. Mancini then, because.
There's a difference when we, so that we're clear what we're talking about, those are two different situations.
Cause apparently, we're not really revisiting a motion, because we never.
If it was just as the board, what's the board's input versus the board's approval versus input? And so, I'm not sure exactly what that action was, but. So if it was just input, then anybody could revisit it, you know, obviously.
I think it was more of an input than it was, uh.
Yeah, cause it was already going down before we were asked.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that the board was on board, I guess, with that change. And, uh, five said yes, and so we just continued with the process. But if it wants to come up for official motion.
Yeah, I, I honestly was tied up with two other issues that I was taking care of at work and didn't fully understand what Nancy was asking.
Well, there was no official board action on it.
If the immediate, the subsequent immediate meeting, you didn't vote on it in a public meeting, then I would say that. Cause we can't bypass the.
So would we have to make a motion to?
Correct it.
Change? Or stop the program?
You wouldn't have to, because you really didn't have to yet.
Okay.
My, my only thing with this though is, I mean, is Mr. Keeley came in here and gave us a PowerPoint presentation. It was what he said he was going to do.
Sure.
Mr. Keeley came in here and had the presentation for us in here, and I mean, nobody really stopped and asked too many. And you did, of course.
And so did George.
Right, but I mean, everybody, like.
I told him all this again, but.
Right, I mean.
But we didn't know that in a, in a week and a half or two weeks, that he was gonna say, well, this is what we're gonna do then, if everybody's okay with it. I mean, if I would've known that there was gonna be a poll coming, then, I mean, nobody knew that that was something he wanted to implement, you know, now without us being able to discuss it. And, I mean, I feel like, I told you this before, I felt like it was just pushed. And that there wasn't enough time for us to even discuss to see any kind of educational value or, you know, what we're gonna be losing versus gaining, I mean, there wasn't any of that discussion. And now we're stuck in a situation where we look like the stupid because we didn't even know the specifics. But, you know, it's to correct those things and, and so that they don't happen again also, but.
Well, I think I gave an offer to do that with the committees. And I think that would solve a lot of those issues of what the administration would like to do. Curricularized academically textbooks where three of the board members are interested in that. And during those meetings, those presentations happen, and that's where it gets hashed out. So if you're looking to the future, I think that would solve a lot of those issues. If we're looking at a past, if you want to put it up for vote right now, um, I don't know if that's.
Do we even need it?
I don't know if it's necessary, uh, issue that needs to be voted, I guess the, the majority of the board has a, uh, opinion as to what should or should occur, then. You'll know, you can pass that on to Mr. Keeley. And they are free to make it as motion. And I think this gets into looking into the future too, as to clarifying what things come to for a board vote versus what things administration implements as part of the general overall policy. So, you know, an example would be, we want more technology in the curriculum, but the administrators with the educational background figure out how that gets implemented. So, I'm not sure where this falls into that, but, um, so I think that's part of what you need to work out too.
Somebody could help me, I remember the presentation that night, but why can't we vote on it that night when we were here?
It was never a motion, I think it was a presentation.
I think it was presented to us, this is what I'm doing.
Okay.
Not presented, would you like to steer our educational system this way to the board members? You know what I mean?
I took it to be that, that's one of the ideas he has for possible change, not that it was happening immediately.
That's what I took as too, cause I, I even put in my email back that I was against it at this point. So I, I heard more, I wanted to see what educational values there were this way versus the way it is. But that never happened, and it was just like, you know, like I said, it was what, two and a half weeks, three weeks later, and here this is changing again. There's a lot of change.
Can I, uh, make a suggestion?
Yeah.
When I first got here, uh, it was already implemented, it was already, the process was block scheduled. And I think it was on like a trial basis, probably, I, I, I don't know, anybody was around at that point.
I had killed in school, that's why I wasn't a board, but.
And then it, then the board voted on it and decided not to do it. You know, it's had an option where if we get committees rolling, if we get an educational and curriculum committee on board, that during this year that it happens, that, that committee looks at it, investigates it, talks to parents, talks to teachers, um, talks to, to students if they need to on, on what they think of it, and then make the decision in a year and scrap it if it didn't work. And that committee reports back to the board and says, hey, it worked out great, kids got remediation, they got enrichment, they got, you know, it didn't work, it was, you know.
I would like to see it just the opposite. Let's have a committee go in and discuss why he wants to change it and what educational values there are in changing it. Because, like I said, my son just left fifth grade, it was great. Those teachers did a, I, I couldn't expect anything more. And you're talking about changing something to me that's not broke. And I don't even, I, I just don't understand it, nothing was given to me that says, this is a problem and this is how we're fixing it. Because I didn't see any of that, I just saw, let's bring it like this.
If I remember from his presentation, was it gives him the ability to enrich and remediate? Uh, where the students would go back to a math class or go back to a reading class either for enrichment or for remediation.
But that meant one of those teachers then was dealing with all three at the same time.
They're dealing.
Because they're not separated.
Different students, if I remember correctly. They mean different teachers, they didn't go to the same teacher, but to another to get more enrichment or more.
But that meant one teacher was doing all three, because the kids weren't being separated into groups of, well, this one, this group of kids needs more help, so we're gonna get them in this teacher and they're gonna, they're gonna lift them, and this ones are excelled, so we're gonna push them forward. It was gonna be one teacher that was doing all three in that class. And if one teacher can do that, yes, that's exactly the way it was, because I.
I need clarification on that, that's something that I.
But see, that's the point that I had, that there wasn't any.
If I could direct this, uh, discussion, is Mr. Mancini's asking to, uh, you correct me if I'm wrong.
It's just a suggestion, yeah, go for it.
It's a suggestion to implement this in the fall. And through this period, whether we have committees or not, the board can analyze it. And if the board doesn't like it, that'll be, it'll end next, at the end of the year, if you wanna try it for again. Mr. Petrelli doesn't want to try it at this time, is that correct?
Correct, I'd like to.
Okay, so I think, just, uh, to move things on, we'll just poll the board right now and see how we, Mr. Gardner?
No.
Those are our options, okay? You're in agreement with Mr. Petrelli, you don't even wanna try it, okay? All right, Mr. Petrelli.
I'm against it. I'm against it. Thank you.
Mr. Morella. Hate to put you on the spot, but.
You know, I've always said that, um, I think that our administrators know what, know what they're in. And, um, curriculum wise, it, I think the board has a hand in establishing what we see as our goals to having a good, solid curriculum. But in a consistent system. And I don't see how we can have one elementary program or one elementary grade doing one thing and another, doing another thing. So, I mean, these were all concerns that were brought up in the classroom. And I think Mr. Keeley is trying to move fifth and sixth grade in that direction to get them on the same page. But yet again, I don't see how going back to the way that it was is going to be consistent. But, um, I do believe that we need to establish committees and figure out the pros and cons and the benefits of this situation. And if this board is unwilling to do that, then we'll never know if Mr. Keeley's way is going to work. So, um, at this point, since the board is unwilling to establish these committees at the moment, then I guess I would be okay with reverting back to the way that it was.
Okay, so.
Is that a yes? These were the last.
I, I do believe, for quick clarification, Mr. Mancini's proposal for the, uh, more active committees, Mr. started the fall.
Is that what? The board would like to start.
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, okay. Mrs. Grossman?
Uh, I'm a yes, I'm for, I'm.
For leaning.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
I know, I am confused. I guess I'm in agreeance.
Okay, Mr. Mancini wants us to try it, so far everyone doesn't want to do that, is that what you're?
I'm, yeah, I, I never like trial and error. I like to be a little bit more prepared, I don't like the fixing something that's not fixed.
You think kids are getting things?
Okay, Mr. Stevenson?
Well, I guess there's two schools of thought here. But I'm a firm believer in letting educators educate. I'm not an educator. Okay? Uh, I think when their children are changing schools as they do from fourth to fifth, and they go into the fifth and say, hey, they're gonna change it, that's the time to do it, change schools, change children. Okay? When they change schools again, they're gonna be doing it. So, fifth and sixth grade, if they manage to it and the administrators seem to think there is, then I don't have an objection to it.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of public relations on this too. And I know, I don't know what everybody's opinions are, but my opinion would be, um, just like the board didn't accept it very well, we felt it was very pushed on us. I think some of the parents, I think the parents need to be notified that there might be a possible change coming up.
No, cause they will get four hundred and thirty.
You know what, so what? The parents have, it's not that you want their opinion, but at least let them know. These are their children. And it's not saying that you have to listen to every single parent. But it was the same way when they, when we wanted to go the, to the schools and make, you know.
Grade level.
The grade levels, do the grade levels. The first time it was presented was horrible, and the parents just went crazy. The second time it was brought to the parents, and they were actually allowed to mentally break it down in their head and know that their, their kids were thought of first, you know, in a certain situation. And when it was broke down to them and the public relations went out, they were totally for it, you know? When they know it's for education a hundred percent and not just for, I don't know, I, I mean, not that we have to, I mean, it's their kids. I wouldn't be happy if my fifth grader was going to school and switching classes. It's very impersonal, and, you know, they're still kids.
So I'm fearing that there is a consensus for, uh, what is, is Keeley's playing along.
I hate the change. I don't want fifth and sixth grade to be a mini junior high or a mini high school. It's still relevant, okay, through six.
I would also comment and say, um, I don't think this was a good way to go about it. I think it, um, I think it's unfair of Mr. Keeley now to be thinking that he had something rolling and thought that he had board approval, and now he has to revert back to the way that it was. I just don't think it's fair to him as an administrator. I can see myself in his position, getting frustrated with, um, kind of unclear direction of what it is that we, us thinking one way and then he's coming back a month or two later thinking another. So, I mean, I, I would be okay. Right, I, I mean, I would be okay with set, setting off this roll call for this poll and having another informational meeting with Mr. Keeley to hear kind of what he has to say. I mean, if, if, if that's our right, that, that we didn't know what the academic benefits are gonna be and how this is going to positively affect our kids and our school, I think if he still has, should, deserves a chance to have a conversation with us as a board instead of us saying, no, you can't do that anymore. And I, I just don't think that's fair.
I agree, but I think that that should've happened in the July meeting instead of him, or the June meeting, instead of him doing, I don't think it was handled correctly. It was, if, if he would've come back at the next meeting and said, okay, who has concerns, cause I'd really like to move forward, but it was stated in the email that it needed to be done then, and, and again, then.
There's a couple of things here, first off, that kind of, I was gonna ask Mr. Mancini with the consequences of that action, but the idea that Mr. Morella brought up of having another, the August meeting, giving Mr. Keeley another chance, another, it could be time.
Yeah.
So, one way or the other, it has to be notified now. So I guess, uh, just to be clear, I'll ask the board one more time. Is there, other than Mr. Stevenson, is anybody else willing to say we're gonna go ahead and try it? Just wanna make sure everybody has that opportunity.
I'm willing to try it, but I don't know if it's, uh, here.
Yeah, I understand, it's.
The situation, you know, was handled completely wrong.
And if we let it go, then it's gonna be the present, precedent.
But I've been on the side.
Well, the point is, if that's the way it's gonna be, I mean, we, Mr. Mancini needs what Mr. Keeley has, that it could be. Yeah.
I agree with.
So he does have time for that.
You know, I've been on that side, wanna suggested something, and it felt bad on, you know, that's. You know, I would be willing to listen to another explanation if we had time, and we don't have time, you know, at this point.
But, yeah, he has a whole year to set up studies and prepare for it, rather than, I'm already in the process of doing it and it's gonna be a grand.
It's gone.
Well, anyway, is there anything else under new business?
No.
Anyone else? That concludes our, this business section, we will break for interviews, executive session. And we will, we'll reconvene tonight. All right, take a short break.
You got an answer, the teacher, you're on. I can double check with Miss Gibson, she's calling right now. And I'll let you guys know, Jen.
Well, that's true, some of them might not have taken.
Yeah, before we start the interviews, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and go to executive session, Carter.
In other words, paying kettles.
Have a good night.